Are we ready?
Yeah.
We're gonna call the New Bern Council meeting to order at 15:20, 22 at 5:30.
First you said the Father, thank you for this day. We ask you all that you will bless our town with as being city council members. We ask you all that you would just to bless our city. We ask you that you would do your will in favor of our city in your name and prayer. Take me.
I pray.
I pray ladies and gentlemen of the United States of America, in the Republic of which stands one nation under our, in the bill of liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report.
I met with Dale Long, the city engineer. More than likely he'll be at the next workshop. We addressed several issues. I talked to Quincy Carney about the retention pond at the new store up here where Dick's standing used to be. Then turned around and called Mr. Griffin and the engineer over that project. They like some things to be done up there. The field system's gotta be put in. Probably gonna call the building inspector tomorrow and meet with him. One thing I think the city needs to, anytime there's a commercial property built, we need a set of seal withdrawals so we can look at the retention pond if it's being built. So if we have issues come up, we'll know about it. We can kinda address them ahead of time.
Did we have something still not done in the beginning where they were putting retention ponds?
We did, and there was also discussion that if they had any issues that they would be responsible for.
Right. But I think it would help the city out if we had a set, everybody understand it more.
'Cause I knew there was some problems with these stacks. And it's just some for concern that they was on the flood. And then they said they was going.
Well, but we worked with the documentation and the retention pond.
A set of drawings though? Okay.
It was in the package.
In that package when they first started out.
Well, before my time.
Yeah, when they first started out. They had some.
Well, we can provide you a copy of that. Karen doesn't have one, I'll bring my copy and make it.
I can get one for you Karen. I'm sure you'll bring your.
Well, the clerk has one too.
Okay.
Karen, yes.
Y'all all aware the flood of towns coming up? I done talked to Jimmy. He's, I think he submitted a piece of paper now.
I saw that.
Talked to Jason Sum about it too. I haven't had a chance to talk to Quan about us. Everybody be thinking about us. We need all be aware of that, coming up pretty quick.
Well, we need to set aside a meeting just for the budget, because it takes so long.
Correct.
Because you know we have to go line by line. And so we need to set aside a date to have a budget meeting.
We generally have to.
To, before we can actually settle on it.
Right, I just want everybody to be aware of it, it's coming up.
For what?
When we need to.
Want to go before we set up now if we can?
Fine with me. I think it'd be better off.
We'll hope that you're thinking back with Dave. Because we need to do one, at least one before September.
I am available August 30th.
August 30th? Is everybody else available? I am.
Oh, I'm also available 23rd.
23rd? Uh-huh, that's election day.
What are we talking about?
The first budget meeting.
Okay. So the first one is gonna be August 30th?
I'm also got September 1st.
Does that put us in line with our submissions?
September 1st, okay, that would be that 30th too? Yes.
Are we talking at 5:30 for both?
The 30th and the 1st, you say?
Oh, what table that, how about?
It will be Tuesday and Thursday.
I can't do two in one. I can't do that.
You might be able to tell from the clerk, do two in one week, because we're gonna have a lot of questions for her, she's got the.
I looked at last year, and y'all did, one of your budget meetings, with the workshop, the first Tuesday in September.
This is 6th.
The 6th, yes ma'am, because the 5th is a holiday. Would that work any better?
It's 1st. We do it the 6th?
August 30th and the 6th. Is Michelle available yet?
Uh, yes.
Okay. So we'll do before the meeting?
Work.
If the meeting and a workshop, then?
Yeah. We'll just have an extended.
Well, we just have to extend.
Well, and we hashed most of the, on the 30th and.
Then we should have it, well, we just have to go over and make sure that everything's in line, so we'll be.
Okay, they're running agreement, August 30th and 5:30, and September the 6th.
And 5:30.
At 5:30.
That's basically all I've got. Y'all got any questions?
Anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Yeah, uh, you working on that trail?
Yeah, I've got it.
Attorneys report?
I don't have anything.
Clerk's report? I've ended, uh, got the three bids for replacing the oil motor on the dust conditioner on the community center. Do you wanna add that to the agenda to approve tonight, or?
Is it for the community?
Yes, thank you.
This, uh...
This is for cattle here?
Yes, sir.
This three?
Three.
B and P head.
Brian, Kidding, and Corn, and Cruz, uh, Comfort Solutions. This 3rd one?
It will have, what was it, the 3rd one? I think the 3rd one. It looks like B and P is the chief of the.
B and P?
I guess the chief.
Cursis.
Huh?
Cursis is the chief.
Yeah, what's the chief of?
Cursis is the chief. Cursis is the chief of.
The what?
Cursis Comfort Solutions is the chief.
Oh. By $20.
Do any of them need better work than the others?
Probably not.
Cursis has been doing repairs and we have not had an issue.
Issue with you.
Karen the ones that's been doing the latest repair? Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Who you did, you see, B and P. That's when we knew somebody was working there.
Right. Yeah, and they all.
You want to do better.
I don't see any warranty on any of them.
Okay. Stop, went on that. You should add it, unless you get a new UV. Repair work is about a year and that big.
Does anybody know Cruz is gonna warranty the parts as they build, every day?
He's, he has a mean, I can't tell you that, unless I call him and talk to him. That's what I was saying.
We, that's B and P.
I think he thought everything he worked on so far.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Boy hasn't had to come back and fix anything he's worked on.
Karen, is that the end of just the AC in that other room? What is the little?
Any fixed, the AC in the bedroom, I think.
Did that work too?
Do we, is this something that we want to add to the agenda tonight?
Didn't bring it out for anything, Karen.
I wanna say the next rental is the end of September. Y'all wanna wait, get some warranty information from the other two, or do you wanna bet on it tonight?
Well, we need, I guess we need to get it fixed, in case somebody's doing one right now. Just hope they have a minute in town, they might come on. We didn't give it to our.
So, what, the record for camp want who to approve?
Couldn't go ahead and vote on it, checking out my calendar, that was my head. You know, once you vote on it, that's people.
Well, and I mean, B and P does have warranty, it's.
For a year.
I mean, but it's also limited.
Something I just paid $3,000, the quickest turnaround, and then $2,000, I didn't want warranty. Might have to be fixed though, we don't have choice, but. Yeah, it has to take sooner or later.
No, Cruz pending his warranty. Is that something we can do, mission? Uh, go with a BN, uh, for the work on the air condition, maybe warranty.
About the oil council?
Yes.
Okay, we'll add number 12, motion to a crew. Okay, he does have a warranty.
He does.
You say they had one?
I'm gonna go on here. All right. Um, going back through the meeting minutes and stuff prior, I realize that the memorial plaques that we had in for the two young men, we still have not placed those. Do we know if that tree was bought and replanted? The tree's back up. It is back up?
It is there.
Okay. So do we want to just have the guys take them and put them there, or how are we gonna, how are you gonna wanna do that?
I think you should invite the family if they want to know. I would, you know, at least extend an invitation for them to come, because maybe they want to put it there. Yeah, so.
Just reach out to them. Okay, and see what they say. If they're interested, and then it's not, then we'll.
Then we just do it.
I do know that when the presentation was done, the one on the basin, the other one on the left, was dedicated for the man that was drowned, that's crazy.
Where, when they did the dedication? Well, their family, you know.
Yes.
They're related. They're related.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, the two trees, and one was for one and one was for the other.
Yeah, but I was saying, even their, the family that lives in front of, you know, that family, they are related to that other one.
And they were all there after that. He said the compressor has a five-year warranty and the parts and light goes a year. So pending warranty, he's been taking office, just being motion to a crew. Cruz has cut the solutions, send them out, 11/28/24. Karen, do you have anything else? Um, we know that, we got in touch with Waste Management, they are, will be delivering the roll-offs on August 22nd, and they will be here till September the 5th, two here at City Hall and one at Shady Grove. We'll give you all that information, we made flyers and put them up with customers to see.
When they're gonna pick them up, September 6th?
5th.
Bill for 6th?
The 5th.
You don't want that day. That's late today.
I, yeah, I just realized that on my road, double check on me.
Yes, because that was.
Lee and I have an appointment at 8:30 on service day for him to start the reconciliations on the account. He's wanting to do the majority of them remotely. I'm not sure how that's gonna work, because if he remotes it on my computer to do them, I don't sure it'll work. So, I don't know that that was discussed when. Right, in contract about doing that, because like I said, if he had remoted into my computer, then, yeah, I can't do anything. So he's gonna make it on Thursday, so that's something y'all will have to work out. Okay, so. Uh, we, I did, we are getting our second check from ARPA, for the ARPA tomorrow for 176-801, will be deposited into our account. We had the maintenance agreement with FDOT. The last that we had on it was where Michelle recommended that we turn it back over to them due to the cost, we don't have the equipment, we don't have the manpower. We never actually voted on, did anything with it. She called me today, Sheila didn't answer, are we going to enter into that agreement with them? The mowing tree, the grass?
That the city does now?
Right, that they pay us for? On the wrong way?
I have Jason Van Tru as part of our, he already said we don't have the manpower to do it. Anymore, we don't wanna get rid of what we already, we already got, we're already doing, we can handle that, but in order to put all that extra on us, not with the manpower we have right now, we.
Well, and we discussed that before, we really don't have the manpower or the equipment, right?
We don't have the equipment.
And we don't have the equipment either, we have to buy the equipment, different equipment to handle all that, and probably another man, and the money they would give us for that would pay for it.
It would not, we already said that.
But you said Michelle turned in, I thought this, they didn't want what we already had?
No, when y'all, when it was brought for discussion, my recommendation was.
Okay, you.
Yes.
So I could just notify her that we, or do we have to vote on it? I don't think we have to vote on that, we're all in agreement that it's a no. Michelle, we don't have to vote on that, do we?
Okay.
Let the people we got, because that's our parade stuff, and right there at the city, we want to take care of that, maintain that.
But they don't do that anyway.
Uh, we go from the bridge to the caution light, and from these and whatever right there to Pioneer.
Where do they take us?
That's what we got now, we.
Where are they, where are they supposed to start morning?
They're supposed to go from head to town, all the way to the caution light there, and then from Pioneer to City Limitside.
They're also supposed to go out from the caution light?
Yeah, we also, the caution light out, that we, on Moss River.
I just wanna make sure.
That's all I have for now. Recreation director report?
All I have is our jam breeze this weekend for football in Knoxville. We'll be out there from 9 to about 6. Ended up with 74 football, 14 cheerleaders.
74 football, how many teams is that?
All 14.
You got all four?
Yes, sir.
You had a lot of kids here that night.
And that jam breeze in Knoxville?
Yes, ma'am.
What the other day was?
This Saturday.
This Saturday. Is that all you have?
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have anything for Kennedy? Help it works, Chris, report Chad.
I only, I only have two things, one of them we just covered, the grass. The other thing is tobacco, we all know it's been in bad shape now for a while, we're trying to get somebody mobile to come out and take care of it, we have had no luck. And we're at the point where if we keep using that thing, we're having to band-aid it to keep it going, plug it along a little bit at a time, a little bit at a time, but if we keep on, we're gonna have to buy a new one, because we're gonna tear that thing up. So we're gonna have to take it somewhere and get it repaired. We got the main seal that we can't do, the main one underneath where you sit at there in operations, but that's just too much for us to be able to take it apart. And the main one on the balloon, on the bucket, plus the throttle control's messed up, and it's something into the motor, it's just, I've tried changing the fuel, I'm not a mechanic, but diesel, I try to do what I can, but the thing keeps dying and dying, and sluggish and sluggish, and then running and dying, so it's got to be fixed. And while it's in the shop, we're gonna have to have something, because we need it, we need it going. We've got several projects, we was really, really swamped, but we've been catching up real good, but we still got quite a few to do, and they always come in, we got new water taps and sewer taps coming in, and all, you know, right now we got a couple on the schedule, we've got to have this, so I got some prices up for a mini that we can get while that's in the shop.
A rental?
A rental.
Yes, ma'am.
I looked around for temporary, right here, place and bond, they middle brooks only does one day, they won't do no more than a day at a time, and if you got it a week, charge you seven days. And they're 295, so their day, their day price is okay, but they don't do weekly or monthly, and we're gonna have to have it for a little while. So I called United Rentals, Panama City, and their day rate's quite a bit higher, so they have a good week rate and a really good month rate. It's 385 a day, um, 1,035 for the week, and if you keep it the whole month, it's 2,088 dollars. We're gonna need it for a minute to keep that covered, so. We can't be without tobacco, we need to keep on it, just, we have to have it.
Not quite the end here, are you gonna get?
The haul or the thing? It's odd that we don't. We're gonna try and, John Deere, the one you got. That's what Jason said, Caterpillar or John Deere or something like that, we take the one, the big, you know, bigger company, whatever, if we know it's going right. Uh, the people that we've been, mobile guys who've been given, none of them will even answer a phone or respond. We can't, I wonder what to deal with that, it's a little quirky, actually. We're bound with it, right now we're on a project, we have to shut down, we'll be finishing it in the morning. I got it going again, over at the church, on Moss River, we got one there, these fixed, and we had to stop. So, but I've got it back going again, so we'll be finishing in the morning, but we've got to have the backup. How y'all want to transport this mini? The transport, if we let, if we let them bring it to us, it's 250 dollars for delivery, and after, when they pick it back up, it's 250 dollars.
How you gonna transport it to the city?
Into the city? No, we don't have trouble, we're gonna drive it around town. We, hey, we're all the time giving tasks, if we don't really have any, we come up with a way, Chad.
How, how big a mini are you talking about?
Uh, the one that I got quoted on with the 8,000 pound mini, it's, I think it's got an 18 to a 24 inch bucket on it.
There's a rental place in Panama. I wanna say it's Panhandle, but I'm not sure. Um, that also rents, and they rent trailers with them.
I've been doing when I need a trailer outside, I usually call my phone and I borrow your trailer, I've done it several times with Brother Dennis, he's real good about them, Jimmy.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, you're talking about a 7,000, 7,000 or 8,000 pound machine?
Yeah. It's.
The truck should be able to pull it.
Oh, yeah.
If you can get it.
Oh, yeah, Jason's truck, for sure.
So, and, and I'm just saying, I don't know about the, the one that you talked to, if they rent trailers with them or not, but I know that...
I could look into that as well.
I'll look at that number, 'cause we've actually used them before, and they, I know that they rent the trailers with the machines, and their rates are comparable.
What's that place on Clean Road?
That has all of that equipment.
They don't have...
All, all their equipment is smaller than, and... I'll look it up and give you that other number.
Okay.
Like I said, I mean, this isn't something that we can vote on right now, but it's something that we need to...
If something tears up, they gotta have it, would that be considered an emergency issue?
Yeah, that'd be a good question.
In my opinion.
But it's only two hundred and some dollars, but they can go live in it, not five hundred at the beginning.
Yeah, I mean, if they have to do it that way, do it in a...
In an emergency situation.
And, and like, the weekly rate or the, the few days rate until...
Yes, again, because you don't have to have an approval with that.
I suggest if you're gonna get one, it ought to be the weekly, 'cause it's four hundred dollars a day, and if you got it three days, that, that's a hundred and fifty more than would be just a week, so...
Well, and again, in the meantime, we've got to find somebody to fix the one that we got, and know how long that's gonna take too, because it may...
We weren't able to get, I tried to call around and get estimates for repairs, but nobody could really put their foot in their mouth without seeing it, and knowing exactly. I can tell them all day, hey, it's this, this, and this, but they need a mechanic to look at it, and it'd be talking about...
There's nobody gonna give you an estimate till they get it in the shop.
Yeah.
Unless you can get somebody to come out and look at it, which he said he can.
I've been trying, I have had no luck personally. I've talked to a couple of people that I, I got a guy, Chad, I wasn't able to, I tried and tried and tried with him, um, and then I had a couple of other guys that I was told about, but I just can't, didn't return the phone call.
Well, you, council told you that in an emergency situation, you know, if it's under five hundred, you have to start by the day or whatever until we can meet or get together on it, and I will give you that, I'll have that for you by the phone, I just have to look at it. And that'll be a, a secondary that you can call and compare with, and I do know that they rent trailers with their equipment.
Think that's this for me.
Anybody have anything for Chad? Thank you, Chad, I know you said you couldn't stay for the whole meeting, so I appreciate you coming. Fire chief's report?
He was following up with his request from the last meeting, and that is actually number ten and eleven on the agenda, on the new business, I mean. And he is wanting to send money, um, for firefighter, firefighter Adrian Brown. To help with his expenses.
If it's under five hundred dollars, he doesn't need permission from council to do that on his budget.
Oh, you mean for the fire?
He, the fire chief is requesting that the fire department donate money to Adrian Brown. Did he give it amount?
No, ma'am.
Well, if, if it's, if it's under five hundred dollars, he can do that on his own. If it's more, then he has to come from council.
Well, he's back home now, I have an update on him, he isn't back home towards I know, and he went to, he went to Gainesville, and they sent him to mop it down in Tampa. And I guess they did a biopsy, but it's not cancerous, they say, but it's just in a spot that, I guess, if they go in there, I don't know. But they were saying they're trying to shrink it, because it's in a bad spot. That's why they're controlling some of the nerves, that's not good. And so, they want to see, can they shrink it first, they're giving him a lot of medication, so he is home. And he deals out of, well, he had a job, well, he still has a job, 'cause he works for, not that they put him...
UBS?
UBS, but of course, he can't drive now, 'cause he, he had a disease, so he cannot drive. But I'm sure they're doing something, you know what I mean, he's been taking care of him down, but I'm just letting you know the update that I got. But I haven't talked to, to people that I wanna talk, parents, you know, 'cause I know them real well, so I really, I'm supposed to see them Saturday night, so when I see them, I'm gonna talk to them and find out. And then I'll let the council know what we need, what we, what we need to do, and I'll talk to them.
He is a member of our fire department?
Fire department, yes.
So, it's, soon as you know something or figure out what, what they need or...
Whatever.
What's going on, and, yep, we get together later time and decide how we may help.
But I'll let you know, they still didn't find out about him, you know, about him, but I know he's back home now.
Thank you. We need to keep giving his family our prayers as well.
Yes.
But, oh, you have friends here?
I've got something, I'm gonna keep it short, if I can, um... Y'all know that we met, um, in a Zoom meeting, they were much back to the E P, learning some fields that we had previously. And I was notified today that, um... It's coming down the pipe, we're going to have, um... A short form consent order.
The what?
A short form consent order, it's a consent order, but it's my understanding that it's the short form, something that they're apparently doing differently, it's not as, uh, I guess, technical as, as the normal...
Consent?
Consent. They offered a number that it looks like it's gonna be around, and it's just approximately around twenty thousand dollars. If we do it in kind, it's gonna cost, if it's twenty, then it'll cost thirty, we did an in-kind project. We have not received it yet, but it is on the way. Anybody have any questions, Jimmy can promptly answer them. I do know that Jason turned in some expenses to what degree, I don't know, and they, they offset those expenses on what has been done, you know, in the extension of, and helping with it not happening again, I don't know what that is, but they're gonna take that off, still gonna be around for me. So, when we get that paperwork, we're gonna need to follow the guidelines and be prompt.
Very quickly.
Anybody have any questions? Ask, ask me to give a cut, 'cause that's, that's all I know at this time. Jimmy, do you have anything to add to that, or?
No, that's pretty much it right there. Not sure.
That's my report, counsel. Um, public participation, Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Hello.
Hi. I'm one here wondering about the, uh, change in, uh, land use for, uh, the corner of, uh, seventy-nine and Moss Hill Road. It doesn't say what they're wanting to change it to. And, uh, you know, is it unlimited, can they put anything on that property, or?
You're talking about?
Commercial.
There's an ordinance twenty-two dash two thirty-four that's gonna be read for the second time tonight and voted on.
Yeah, okay.
It, it does, um... I can actually show it to you, it's, um...
It says in, in the ordinance, what it went.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's being designated from City of Vernon Residential Medium One to City of Vernon General Commercial.
So, they could put anything on it, I mean, is there any restrictions on what they can put on that commercial?
Nothing other than what the county may restrict.
Okay. I mean, okay.
Am I correct on that, Michelle?
Mm-hmm.
And when will they, uh, when will I go into effect, I mean, will you vote on it tonight?
Yes, it's gonna be read tonight and voted on tonight.
Yes, sir.
And then, then it goes back to the county, is my understanding?
Okay.
He owns the property next to it.
Yeah.
So, that's why I'm, I'm curious about it.
Thank you. I mean, I just would like to know what they're gonna use it for, and they just don't know.
We're not aware of what, we just, um, are voting on the change.
Okay.
Of the usage.
Okay.
And uses of, I mean, even if we do vote on it with them, it still will have to come from the county.
Yeah, and any restrictions that the county makes it on, it'll be there, but the city would not have any restrictions on it. We're just approving the change of the land use, and the owner of the property will decide what they're gonna do with it, and they have to go to the county for that.
Okay, alright.
Basically, it'd be similar to, and I don't know if you're familiar, but we have a Dollar General, a new one being built as well as a family, and it was the same process. We didn't know what was going in until after it went through the county, then they came to us with it.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, but it, but that corner is pretty, you know, you got a lot of traffic at that corner, that could be a problem.
Well, we tried to get a light there.
And we're still trying to do the red light there.
And we still trying to get a light there.
Oh, okay.
Because of all the traffic, and people try to go across the two lanes to get into, you know, the lanes to get into that, to go south, and that's dangerous.
Well, and it's my understanding too, that's still under study. Michelle, it should be coming...
It's on the way to study, yeah.
They are doing a study on it, too, 'cause we would like to see a red light there. Did we answer your question?
Yes, you did. I need to go to the county meeting, find out exactly what they're gonna do with it.
Did you?
There hasn't been a development plan submitted, no, yet, this is just...
This is just at the owner's request.
Yeah, okay, but I, I just don't think that every business is good, you know, for a corner like that.
Like I say, as, as of right now, it's just the landowners requesting the change, so I don't know any business or anything that's gonna be put there.
Yeah, that's fine.
Do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Grant. Is, is there any more public participation? Okay, number one, the second reading of ordinance twenty-two dash two thirty-four. In accordance, uh, I'm sorry, ordinance number twenty-two dash two thirty-four, in accordance by the city council of the City of Vernon, Washington County, Florida, approving the application, Sheriff Volzal Braut, and Hubert H. Volzal Senior, and Etal, E T A L, property owners for an amendment to the future land use map in the comprehensive plan of the City of Vernon, Washington County, Florida, dated April fourth, nineteen ninety-one. As amended by changing the future land use map designation from City of Vernon Residential Medium One to City of Vernon General Commercial for one, one point zero seven acres of land at twenty-nine oh two Moss Hill Road, Vernon, Florida, parcel ID number zero zero four eight two three zero 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 zero, providing for a copy on file, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Is there any discussion on that? Hearing none, committed motion two, motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash two thirty-four.
Make motion to approve.
Thank you. Discussion, all in favor?
Uh-uh.
Motion carried.
You did the second order?
Just, just wait.
Okay. Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two twenty-two dash one eighty-one, the state funded grant agreement, that was in our last package. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'm making motion for it, too.
Second? Discussion. All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Uh, motion carried. Motion to approve invoice two two five six eight F from A A G Electric Motors in the amount of seven thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second?
Second, please.
Discussion.
Money coming from? Where is it coming from?
It's, my understanding that four, five, and six are all... Basically, it was done in the sewer plant, so...
Yeah.
That's all over.
Emergency program.
But, but just, that's what part, what are they gonna use the pay for?
Thank you. Do we have that money now?
There's one of those, yeah.
Is one of those lazy bone? Is one of them lazy bone lift station?
I don't know, we just have two more numbers here.
When there's one invoice y'all haven't got, I don't think yet, for the sewer plant. Don't know if I possibly have it.
And why are you asking about lazy bone?
I know they done some work up at lazy bone, and I just wondered if one of those is for lazy bone, lift station. Y'all had approved that a while back, that the company that was gonna do it never showed up.
That wasn't the one that was in the grant? Wasn't the lift station that was involved in the grant one? The only one that specifies is the Sprayfield pump, but the other two do not specify the location.
Can I look at them real quick, I can take with the switch.
They're just one of those FEMA grants pertaining to that field station, but it's one, I've had to write the letters on it, still wasn't on information.
So, that is...
We can approve something, we don't have the money.
It's two oh one or one seventy-seven?
They're gonna approve it.
Huh? We ain't approving it. I said, but it came up with discussion, you know, because you have to wait.
But that, the work's been done.
I know the work's been done.
So, Gary, you're saying that one of those, that the lazy bone one is the one that's...
According, according to Jason, that should be part of that FEMA work. And I wrote the letter, submit request, and they redirect funds back to us.
But we don't have it yet, that would just...
No, you don't have it, no, you had it, but you don't have it.
But the thing is, all three of these projects gotta be done. These three we talking about, right, thirty thousand, twenty-nine thousand, that's three of them.
Where? I seen the one you talking about.
Four, five, and six. Probably spent them.
Yeah, and number six is the one that Jimmy told us, he thought maybe in the thirteen thousand range, but that, he wasn't sure.
What's that?
Uh, number six.
Yes, and there's gonna be one more of those, coming.
So, normally these bunks will come out of water and sewer and street?
It usually comes out of water and sewer.
I don't say water or sewer.
Sewer's just the way it comes from.
Better. As of right now, we do not have it, 'cause we got other bills, we don't have it to pay, pay basis. And the work's printed up?
Yeah.
So, the one pump that does Sprayfield work in that? The one pump that Sprayfield work in that? They pulled... We bought a new motor for one of them, they put it on, the pump's locked up, they pulled the pump, they still got it, we ain't even got an estimate on that.
So, there's none working there?
One.
So, that's not part of it?
No. Man, until they do, pull these by it away...
Man, until they do a fully evaluation, you know, they gave me an estimate eleven to thirteen, if they didn't have to put any major parts in.
Okay, so what I'm trying to figure out is four, five, and six, which are the, your, your invoices, what do they say?
Well, it's like, like-
One was for the water well, one was for the spray filled pump, and what was the other one for?
Number, that's for two pumps at the plant.
Plant.
And that new spray filled motor, they took back with them because the pump was bad, now bring it all back. And then there's going to be one more pump for the plant, y'all haven't got any for some yet.
Okay, you said there was one for the lift station that we don't have.
Obviously, you don't have that either, I, I'm not really over that, I just know that they done the work for Jason up there, and that's why I was thinking-
That one, the one that's the grant.
Did you get the grant money, did they give it back to us?
They never, they never gave it to us, they just never-
No, we had it at one time, and we didn't use it in time, saw it a lot, so they reclaimed it.
Several, several months ago, y'all approved, lazy bone was having an issue, and, um, we had a company, he had a company that was going to come in, had to work some parts, but it just never come back, wouldn't return his call. And he called and asked me about it one day, and I said, well, you can call A A G, and that's what he done, what all they done? Can't really tell you, I know one of the motors burned up down there.
The grant that we're talking about was from a while back.
Yes.
That got picked back up.
Resubmit letters on them.
Yeah, I submitted letters, and then you had to resubmit, and it was dead before that. I got news about it, but within two days of it dying, and requested it, and then you requested it, and I'm assuming that they told you the same thing they did me, it'll be cleared, but I can't tell you when.
Yeah, they can change, they want to change your personnel anytime, they change personnel.
It backs us up, yeah.
And on lazy bone, they done the control panel. But I got a call this afternoon, and I have to talk to Jason, y'all just need to talk to him after I talk to him, but the pumps that are in it won't keep up. So they're, they're looking at possibly putting a larger pump in there.
Say what now?
I don't, see, I'm not very, I don't do any work up there, so I don't, I can't give you all the details.
If you hadn't appeared at sewer plant, we wouldn't be operating right now. I guess the question, my question is, the council proved these three items, you don't have a word ahead, for either, you took thirty thousand dollars.
Emergencies.
Yeah, I know that, so what it's down to is, what is the city going to get the money from to pay you the bills, because the work's going down, so I can say, so you the twenty-nine, three fifty, I had to say, so, uh, care what we got the money at.
Well, that's what I'm saying, that's why I put on there what accounts, I mean, Lee will be here Thursday morning, he'll, he'll, I don't know if he'll be able to answer that question Thursday. I don't know what all he needs to do to be able to, to look at it.
What, do we still have the city office?
Yes.
Would that cover it?
I don't have much to spend, and I don't-
We maybe need to check.
So you really need Lee to give us a true picture of, so you'll know where everything's at.
Exactly. Yeah, but we need those records.
Remember, we asked, did we have the money, and we made the decision that it didn't matter, it might be done anyway.
Yeah, but I mean, how much, did all of it have to be done, Jimmy?
All of it.
Okay.
So we got to come up with-
They actually tried to get one of the pumps down. And that's why the third one's coming back.
Water into it, and maybe some can come out of water into it, and then the city office, maybe we could get enough.
Make a transfer, so I'm out of scree.
Out of what?
Scree, for having an opinion of the budget here.
Lee should be able to give you that information, so he should, you'll know Thursday. I'm open, like I said, just let him know that we, yeah, we need that information.
And he could show you probably how to move it around, I guess, I don't-
Oh, yeah, so we already know how to do it, what we can. You'll know what, we can move where and what we can.
Right, that's, that's the main question, right there.
Or some of it can't be moved with things.
So he, he should be able to provide you that, that information if we have to, um, no, a special meeting afterwards will have to, I don't know, maybe this will hold until our next meeting. So we, we have to know what, where, and what to move.
We're having that meeting the thirtieth, so maybe we'll know something by then, it's a budget meeting, but there's no reason-
But we can set a special meeting right before, if we need to-
You just say, just see what's going on with it.
Yeah, so Karen, if you find out Thursday, they will know, and we'll have time to advertise the special meeting.
Before the-
Before the ready meeting.
Before the- We'll do it at the work, at the thirtieth meeting.
On the thirtieth.
So, we're going to table four, five, and six. Motion to approve sewer credit for account one-one-one-nine due to a leak in the amount of thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents, do I have a motion to approve?
Second?
Discussion. I have to abstain, because this is my mother-in-law's deal, um, all in favor? Abstain, motion carried. Motion to approve minutes for special account for meeting on April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two, do I have a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve.
Second? Discussion. All in favor? Motion carried. Motion to approve minutes for special meeting on May second, twenty-twenty-two. Second? Discussion, all in favor? Motion carried. Motion to approve purchase of oil gas meter for the Vernon car department in the amount of ninety-eight hundred dollars and thirty-four cents. Do I have a second? Discussion.
Does he have that money? Y'all checking his money right here, how much is it?
This was in our, this was in our packet last week.
I knew it was.
And we, we, well, again, we thought that we were going to know what was where by now, and that kind of got plugged up a little bit.
Yes, I was saying.
So we need to table the time as well.
Yeah, we do probably go up a really, we call, to check on that.
Ten and eleven, table.
Find out where we getting this money from, yes.
Karen, if you speak to him, you can let him know why we have to table it. Yes, I will let him know. Number twelve, motion to approve Cruz Comfort Solutions, amount of one thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents for the air conditioner and the convenience center.
What you was saying? You better hold off the jackpot, yeah. Okay, we'll find out where some of this money is coming from. City going to be real around you, he's going to come after us, we'll come together.
Alright, is that everything, you have a motion to dismiss?
I'll make a motion.
A John, sorry. Second? See, that's all in favor, uh.
George, George make a thing, I second it.
All in favor, any, a John, and dismiss.